Final actions to report?
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Final action tonight.
Okay, we will now adjourn the City Council's special meeting and call to order the City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, December 13th. Clerk, would you please call the rule?
Councilmember Zakino.
Here.
Chalamchela.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rorba.
Here.
And Rodriguez. Here. Let us stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda updates?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. There is a revised staff report for Item 13 and additional information for Item 20. And additionally, Items 20 and 23 are being continued through the January 10, 2023 council meeting. A copy of this revised staff report and additional information for those items have been provided to you previously. And a copy, actually copies are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you. We will now move to business from the floor. This is the opportunity to address the City Council concerning any item within the City Council's jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. Please keep in mind that the City Council is generally prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item that is not on the agenda. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes. There is a speaker timer on the podium in front of you that displays the time you have remaining on your three minutes. The color will change to yellow when you have 30 seconds left and will turn to red and blink when you have three, when your three minutes are completed. We ask that everyone respect the three-minute limit to ensure that all speakers have equal opportunity to address the council. Are there any requests to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have one request to speak tonight from Kevin Goddard. Come on down.
Good evening, Kevin.
So there's light. Good evening. Which, which speaker?
To your left.
This one?
Yep.
Small one?
That's it.
Okay. Hear me now?
Yes.
Good, thank you. So, good evening, Council. My name is Kevin Goddard. I'm a resident of District 4 in the Bungloes neighborhood. So first, to the current council members, re-elected council members, newly-elected council member, Madam Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor and outgoing council member Kerry Howell, thank you for your service. I appreciate all the things that you have done and are doing for the city of Folsom to make it is what it is today. I also want to recognize Police Chief Rick Hillman. I want to thank you for working with the school districts to provide the school resource officers. I have a son who is currently at an atoma station and will be starting Folsom Middle next year. And I hope that we'll be able to continue working with the police department and the school districts to continue providing the school resource officers. I believe this is important for several reasons. First, they provide a visible presence at the school, which can deter crime and hopefully make students feel and staff feel safer. Second, they can help enforce laws and school rules, and they can intervene in situations that may escalate into more serious problems. Third, they can serve as a resource to students and staff, providing guidance and support on a variety of issues related to safety and security. And now, while this is not the only approach to make a school safe, it makes me feel better as a parent knowing that there is an officer that is either on campus or nearby to respond in the event of an emergency. Also, I'll conclude with that, and thank you for your time, and I hope you have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Your next item this evening will be your scheduled presentation item number one. This will be a staff presentation on new state housing laws.
Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez and Councilmembers. Stephanie Henry with the Community Development Department here this evening to give a presentation on several of the new housing laws. As you're aware, over the past several years, the state legislature has been really busy passing housing laws to try to make housing, to increase housing production as well as to reduce barriers to production. And this year was no, it was no exception. In fact, this year included, this year included 41 laws related to housing. Not all of those impact Folsom, and I'm not going to cover all of those this evening, but I did want to highlight several. A number of, number of these laws range from small bedroom additions to including transforming office parks with new residential and mixed-use development. So during this presentation, I'm going to examine some of the most significant laws that were signed in, into effect this year and kind of go through them based on a category. So we'll look at laws that are centered around residential development on commercially-zoned land, streamlining, parking reform, accessory dwelling units, density, and then also laws pertaining to housing element annual, annual progress reports. So this year, there were two pieces of legislation aimed at the goal of unlocking the potential for housing production on currently commercially-zoned sites. Under California's AB 2011, this law creates a ministerial streamlined process for multifamily housing development on commercially-zoned property when the project pays prevailing wage to construction workers and meets specified below-market-rate affordable housing targets. Under this law, there are two specific pathways for developers to take. They can do a 100% below-market-rate project, or the second pathway is a mixed-income project located specifically on a commercial corridor. The other important thing to note about this law is that it sunsets in 2033 and does not take effect until July of 2023. Did I say sunsets in 33, 2033?
I did.
Sorry.
Good. I have one quick question on bullet one. I know a couple of weeks ago, I think, a gentleman came here. He was representing the carpenters' union or something. He was encouraging the builders to use a union-type of people so that the workers can get the benefits and good salaries and all those, and also we can work. Is the second bullet, is anything specific in that regard from state?
The two distinct project types?
I'm so sorry, first bullet.
If I may address that, Councilmember Chalamchela and Madam Mayor, a member of the City Council, you're absolutely correct and spot-on. That was what was advocated by the gentleman from the, right, the trade union. So what this provides, as you may know, prevailing wage applies to government work. Typically, government work, not necessarily private development projects. This would tie private projects to prevailing wage requirement.
Okay. Wow. That guy spoke before, and he might have read the bill, I guess. Thank you.
The next law related to commercially-zoned land is Senate Bill 6. This legislation does not provide for a ministerial approval pathway, but it does allow for multifamily projects to be developed on commercially-zoned land without requiring a rezone. And again, this law does require that the developer pay both prevailing wage and utilize skilled and a trained workforce. And with regards to both of these new laws, city staff is not certain that we're going to see the housing developers in Folsom rely on these laws for housing development. First of all, we have the East Bidwell mixed-use overlay, which runs the whole length of East Bidwell and does allow for multifamily and mixed-use development if a developer decides to go that path. And that's where quite a few sites are still remaining undeveloped. And then, again, regarding the prevailing wage, we haven't had any developers, to my knowledge, that have done any projects in Folsom and paid prevailing wage. And when we have reached out to some of the affordable housing developers with grant opportunities from the state to, you know, try to apply for those grants, they've turned those, those opportunities down, basically, because they, they say it doesn't pencil with the prevailing wage.
I think in both of these instances, the pathway to overcome resistance to doing residential in commercially-zoned areas in other cities, not in our instance, the prevailing wage is a way to unlock that, where the city cannot say no to you. So if you're willing to pay prevailing wage and redevelop a commercial piece of property or use a commercial piece of property for residential, the city can't say no. In our instance, we've already made an open-door policy about doing this, so. That's an important distinction.
So moving on to some of the housing laws that involve streamlining, there's two that I'm going to discuss. The first one is A B Assembly Bill 2234, which establishes a concrete and time-limited approval process for issuing post-entitlement ministerial permits, such as building permits, demolition permits, grading permits, and off-site improvements. This legislation applies only to development that is intended to be at least two-thirds residential. The other important piece of this legislation is that it establishes a shot-clock timeline. So jurisdictions, basically, now, once a building permit application is submitted or grading permit application is submitted, jurisdiction has 15 business days to determine whether or not that application is complete. And then there's also specific timelines for completing the plan check review in these instances. It's not really going to be a huge deal for the city of Folsom because we've pretty, we have pretty tight timelines already. It's just probably a little bit more record-keeping on our end. The next streamlining bill is Assembly Bill 2668. It's also known as the SB 35 cleanup bill. This bill basically makes a series of technical and clarifying changes to SB 35. And for, for reference, SB 35 was signed into law in 2017 and provides for a streamlined ministerial approval process for qualifying housing and/or mixed-use projects that conform to objective development standards and pay prevailing wage and meet minimum affordable housing requirements. So basically, SB 35 is just a cleanup bill of some of that language and clarifies a number of things. I'm not going to read through all of these on the slide, but it does make explicit now that local government is required to approve a development if it determines that it is consistent with SB 35. So that was just one of the notable points of this bill. All right. So out of all of the new legislation that's been brought forward, AB 2097 is probably going to be the most impactful for the city of Folsom. So this one reforms local government parking minimums and specifically prohibits public agencies from imposing minimum parking requirements on residential, commercial, or other development projects located within, excuse me, a half-mile of public transit, and that's defined in Section 2155 of the Public Resources Code. So for the city of Folsom, what this means is this has impact on projects that are within one-half mile of our three light rail stations, including the historic district. So under this new legislation, local governments can only impose minimum parking on projects if the agency can make certain written findings that the inability to impose parking would have substantial negative impacts on, one, ability to meet the regional housing needs for very-low and low-income households; two, the ability to meet special housing needs for elderly persons or persons with disabilities; or impacts on existing residential or commercial development facilities located within that half-mile of the housing development project. The law also says that the findings must be supported by a preponderance of the evidence, and such determinations and findings must be made within 30 days of receiving a complete project application. In addition, the legislation states that a local jurisdiction cannot deny parking reduction for certain housing projects if they meet specified thresholds or other standards. And then I'd also note that in cases where the developer does want to provide parking with their project, the jurisdiction, the city, can require spaces for car-share vehicles, public parking, electric vehicles, and/or accessible parking.
Is that last one really an option? I mean, if you provide parking, there has to be accessible parking. That's in the ADA, right?
I apologize, Madam Mayor, a member of the council. It's actually a disincentive for developers to want to voluntarily provide parking.
Regardless, the accessible parking has to exist, if any parking exists, so.
Yeah. So I'd mentioned that SECOG is actually working on a region-wide map to map out all of these affected areas in, throughout the SECOG region. So city staff will be working with SECOG in getting that map once they have it developed and getting, getting it on the website so that we can use it as a reference.
May I ask a question of the city attorney on this one? So, so the conditions under which we can require parking, do you, do you feel like there's a pathway to do that for the historic district based on, I'm just going to say, the, the parking issues that have been discussed many, many times? Or is that, is the preponderance of evidence not support us demanding some parking facilities be provided for development in that area?
That's a very good question, Councilmember Kozlowski and Madam Mayor, a member of the council. It all boils down to setting the, setting a new expectation for the historic district, not just the residents, but also future developers who may want to develop there. It really depends on the, the scope of the project. If the projects, as proposed, meet, meets those criteria that the law provides for, then we're done. We're done. That, that's the whole reason for the state to cram those housing, mandatory housing requirements onto local jurisdictions with no ability to make discretionary review, does not account for local conditions or local needs and has, or local complaints. And hence, that's just what the state has been doing over the last several years, including 2022. It's going to be very difficult.
May I ask a different question then? Maybe this is for the city manager and the mayor. I think it would be a worthwhile exercise to start to develop a, I guess, a argument or a policy for the historic district specifically. Because I, I actually brought this up a couple of months ago, or several months ago, when this passed originally, that it's one of these bits of state legislation that probably works beautifully for two of our three light rail stations, but the historic district will be, will suffer if, if we have no rules at all. So I would ask that we ask the city attorney to dig into this one very, very carefully to see what our latitude is to support some sort of requirements in that area based on the, you know, the, the parking that exists already being a bit stressed, even if that's just a perception. And I, and I, and I ask that we do that preemptively so that we don't have to do it as part of a back-and-forth with a specific developer, and we can give good, good guidance to the development community.
Stephanie, if you could.
Stephanie, if I understand, these laws go into effect on 1123?
Not all of them, but this one does, yeah.
Stephanie, could you roll back one, one slide? So the parking issue does not apply to just residential development, as you can see, commercial as well?
I'm aware of that, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I think just for the historic district particularly because we have a bunch of overlapping responsibility to take care of that area in a special way. I think we need to preemptively determine what constitutes a preponderance of evidence, I guess, so that we can defend ourselves and we can give good guidance to the development community as we have on all other measures.
I would tell you, Councilmember Kozlowski, as you know me, I'm very straightforward, and it's going to be very difficult to, to hit off a legal fight because no matter what we say, no matter what we produce and provide and be, and make, make whatever we believe is, is supported by preponderance of evidence, it will be attacked. And the, the argument will be laid out in, in front of the court in a, you know, you know, in a judge or jury situation where somebody will then pick and choose whether we made the right call or not.
I, I think this is an instance where being the test case might be a good thing. So I just, I, you know, we have, we have developers who are not going to abuse this latitude, right? And we have potentially a developer who would. We have community members who will be unsatisfied by this regardless of how we approach it, and we have those that will be reasonable in their understanding of this. So I'm just saying that we should get out ahead of it, is what I'm saying.
I would be surprised if any developer would be displeased with the new law. I think we're going to have most of the complaints coming from the residents as opposed to developers.
Like I said, we, we need to be able to give good guidance to everybody involved, so.
We're constrained by the law. We'll find out.
So is there a actual?
So my request is that we deep-dive into this one a bit and make sure that we're giving consistent, good advice to the public and to the development community about what our expectations are and what we think is a safe and reasonable middle ground. Because not providing any parking in those areas could be problematic. That's all I'm suggesting.
So I have a question for the city attorney. So in the event of something, if we can create, we can create what we, what the expectation would be. But if I understand correctly, at the end of the day, it must be a very compelling reason that, of why we would put, say, a restriction. Is that correct?
That, that's a fair statement, Madam Mayor. Another way to look at this is going with Councilmember Kozlowski's approach is knowing what the boundaries are, knowing what the state has set forth as far as the left and the right limitations. There may be a way for us to look outside the box by creating incentives for developers to disregard what the law imposes upon us, but do what is right for the community that they want to build in. So we have different ways to address the issues. It may not be addressing issues following what the law says, but, but, but outside what the law provides. In terms of incentives for voluntary compliance.
Okay. So then the, and just for my own sake, and who, where would this action item go? Just to.
Future agenda. I, you know, we don't have, I don't, I don't think we have a project where this is a big problem right now, but I'm just.
Well, you want to get ahead of it.
I just don't want us to have the planning commission get wrapped around the axle over this particular topic when there's so many other things to talk about.
Okay.
Councilmember Kozlowski, we do have projects in the pipeline that will be affected by this, by this law.
Instead, we'll update the historic district commission specifically.
So that was.
100% is why I'm bringing this up, because I would like to have a comprehensive understanding that we can communicate to the public and the development community about how it is that we're going to interpret. Or, and also to collect and determine what I think is probably actually a preponderance of evidence that we will have difficulty and we will impact the existing parking, parking facilities at some point, right? Everybody can maybe argue about what that point is, but there are, there are, there are people that feel we are past that point already. And if we add any one more thing into that, you know, that historic district, we will make the parking issue more, more, more problematic rather than less, okay? And the well-intended purpose of this, which is to densify residential, spilled over into densifying commercial potentially, and that's something that we have a responsibility to ride this very careful balance with the historic district, that we don't, I guess, that we keep it vital and interesting and attractive, but that we don't turn it into such an attraction that we lose control of it, okay? We don't want it to be Disneyland in the summer, ever. We want it to be our living room, as it has been, so, anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying, and I, and I don't disagree that, you know, I think what Steve is expressing and I'll express as well is it, it is the law, and it's part of what we were discussing about, or it's becoming law, and it, it's just part of the ongoing process of erosion of local control. And, and we can certainly work with our newly-elected, you know, assembly member, for example, and work with state officials to talk about perhaps changes or amendments to that law going forward. But I, I think Mr. Wong is expressing at this point, it is what it is, and it's.
Let me, let me make myself attempt to be clear one more time. I am willing to accept that it is a tough slog to, to create a preponderance of evidence. What I'm saying is that I don't want to give up yet because I think there's a good purpose to it. And I just would like us to make sure that we uncover every possible stone in terms of being able to defend the potential to ask people to provide parking. I think that that's a completely reasonable ask. I don't think that a, a bill that passed, you know, four months ago has been tested in court. And what constitutes a preponderance of evidence in this particular instance may be something that we can invent. I'm just saying. And I know that it's challenging. I'm giving you that challenge, I guess.
Stephen, I will have some stones.
Thank you.
I'd like to chime in on this one. I support Mike on this. I think even having a clear idea of what projects it might affect coming up would be good. Maybe it means, what are we going to do, maybe to incentivize new building or new development to maybe impact fees and maybe push that towards a garage? I mean, how are we going to management with the parking in that area with our residents? And I don't, I don't think a discussion today is going to handle it. But how do we get to like a yes on this? How, how do we protect our residents in that area? And having another further discussion, knowing tangibly what, you know, visually and tangibly what it's really going to affect, what developments it's going to affect. So I, I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think that we should bring this back very soon.
I just have a really quick question about, at the current 112023, there's no, there's no, we cannot impose impact fees if the law states, if the law says you don't, you're not parking, you don't require, you're not required to provide parking. Can I just get clarification on that?
You're absolutely right. If it's not lawfully required, and even more so, if, if the law says you cannot require it.
Okay, I just need clarification.
Then there's no, right. I, I am unclear as to the action item. This is a presentation, there's no action taken, but the direction to staff is to bring another presentation back to council specifically about parking?
Not necessarily. I, I realize that this will be a sort of evolving issue. What I'm saying is I don't want to decide today to just accept that we cannot provide, we cannot demand parking in the historic district from new development. That's all. I'm asking that we not accept that as the status quo based on this law because it does give three conditions under which you can require parking. They're very limited, and they're a little squishy. They're very limited and they're a little squishy and I'd like to try and test the law to see what, how to firm those up. And it doesn't mean that you have to bring a presentation back at the first meeting in January. I'm saying please don't quit on this one because we are going to have some Titanic difficult things to do with projects that are going to come forward.
You know I do not quit. You know, sir, I do not quit.
I guess I just don't want, I don't want it to get narrowed down to, I don't want to wait to try and solve this by getting sued. I'd like to try and preemptively come up with a strategy.
Correct.
Thank you. That's what I'm after and it doesn't need to be necessarily a particular presentation on a particular day, but I would like to work towards us having a strategy to defend ourselves if we need to ask somebody to put parking in their project.
Always.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Stephanie before she continues?
Quickly, I just have a statement. Thank you for your passion. That's really a problem for us. I really see him, right? And again, I hate to say this district, but, you know, he has to represent the people. The more questions are coming, but I see it's already a law. And either we have to go back and negotiate with our legislatures through the League of Cities and putting this. I'm wondering how the LA Downtown and SF Downtown is going to face this while we are Little Town, right? So it's a League of Cities.
People's expectation is that there are no parking spaces available unless you pay a fortune for them. That's not the case in Folsom.
Yeah, makes sense. Anyway, I think it's going back to the League of Cities, pushing and lobbying, making amendments, at least seeing if there is already jammed up locations, do we still want to allow this waivers of no parking? So just a statement I'm making here, but I love the passion of what you're explaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Stephanie, please continue.
Sorry.
Thank you. It's okay.
Okay, so the next topic is state density bonus law. Under the current state density bonus law, developers are allowed to increase density, access a variety of concessions to reduce the development costs, have development standards waived and reduce parking in exchange for providing affordable housing. Under Assembly Bill 2334, there's a variety of density, state density bonus law amendments. The new legislation reforms the state density bonus law to define base density and also provides further concessions for 100% below market rate projects in low VMT areas. The big takeaway for some cities is the definition of base density. So in instances where jurisdictions like general plan, specific plan, or zoning ordinance are inconsistent, this new legislation clearly states that whichever has the highest density is the base density. In addition, some jurisdictions don't have, don't use density as their base. They have form-based codes or utilize FAR, which we're, you know, proposing to do along like our East Bidwell Corridor and our Light Rail Glen Station. So this law dictates a method for determining the base density. Moving on to legislation that impacts accessory dwelling units, I provided this slide just as a brief overview to remind everyone that the accessory dwelling units can be either internally attached, such as a attic conversion, or it could be a detached ADU, such as we have in the Folsom Historic District with some of our ADUs that are in the alleyways that are either attached to a garage or above a garage, or they can be attached such as a new addition to a structure. As we're all aware, the state has determined that the construction of accessory dwelling units is crucial for California to combat what the state states is a housing crisis. As a result, the state has made it so that local governments are exempt from denying accessory dwelling units on residential properties when they meet certain standards, such as being up to 800 square feet, having a height limit of 16 feet, and four feet side and rear yard setback lines. Under this new legislation of Senate Bill 897, this increases the height limit for some ADUs. Specifically, ADUs that are within a half mile walking distance of a major transit stop are now permitted to be 18 feet in height without having to go through a formal review like with the historic district. So that'll be a building permit review. Also, for projects that have ADUs on multifamily dwelling, multi-story, multifamily dwelling units, they can go up to 18 feet. And then for all attached ADUs, they can now be up to 25 feet. We also had AB 221 pass the legislation. Basically, this law is just in place to clean up a lot of language from past ADU legislation. One of the areas is that it requires jurisdictions to either approve or deny an ADU application within 60 days from the time it's determined complete. Doesn't really impact us, but other jurisdictions have multiple layers of review departments. So that's trying to capture that. It also now, the legislation requires that if you do deny an application for an ADU, the local jurisdiction must provide the applicant with a list of reasons why the ADU doesn't meet the standards and then provide remedies for the applicant to take. And then also, another piece is that it now eliminates jurisdictions' ability to mandate front setbacks if the local jurisdiction setback rules would prohibit the construction of the ADU if it meets all the other requirements.
Madam Mayor, just a quick question. Do we, do you have a sense of how many ADUs there are currently that we've permitted previously? Either-
Throughout the city or?
Throughout the city, yeah. It can't be that many, right?
Stephanie, we have probably like 50.
And they're principally in the historic district?
Yes.
Yes, but on average-
Are we starting to see any outside?
The thing is, we can say 50, but we have accessory dwelling units that date back from probably like the 1950s. We have all those little tiny little apartments.
In recent days, since the rules around this have started changing, it's a handful, a couple handfuls.
I don't know that it's really impacted the production in the city as much as other jurisdictions because they've been a popular, you know.
Yeah, 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 okay, thank you.
The last area of legislation that I was gonna just briefly mention is that, that under the new legislation, there's several bills that now increase our reporting requirements on our housing element progress. So each year, we have to provide a report to HCD on our progress in meeting our regional housing needs allocation. And over the years, this process has gotten more and more, more and more complicated with providing additional information. And again, there, under this new legislation, we will be required to identify our extremely low income housing units that have been developed. Whereas before, that was combined with just the very low. We'll also be required to identify if any projects that were permitted or approved were able to utilize AB 2011 or the state density bonus law. And also whether or not any of, whether or not the projects were approved ministerially or was it discretionary approval? And so this basically concludes my presentation. There were a number of other laws that we could have added, but we felt like these were going to be the ones that we were looking at the most, that we were going to have to comply with or have applicants asking us questions about. We will be, I think the packet included a summary of the legislation that was provided tonight. Or we will be including that on our website. So individuals can look back at that and we'll also be providing actual links to the text of the legislation.
Thank you, Stephanie, for your very thorough presentation. Are there any other questions for?
One more. Just one more question. Did any of these changes, I'm thinking maybe AB 2011 principally, actually positively impact our inventory of potential housing development? Can we count it that way if we've got a commercial overlay of the sort? Will that affect our arena calcula, or we have to create that inventory of potential development land?
You're suggesting our available sites inventory might grow because we have more potentially zoned land, but in the requirements for the state in our certification and ongoing tracking, we have to demonstrate that it's real or more real. And so while we have mixed use designations on most of our commercial corridors, this legislation doesn't really change the opportunity in those areas. The base density might, so we'll look into that and see if it does. And then we report back to you in March of this year for the annual report. So we'll take a look at that and make sure that we report out on it.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for Stephanie?
No.
Thank you, Stephanie. And the clerk, please call the next item.
Your next item this evening is your scheduled presentation item number two. This is going to be the city manager's financial update for the first quarter of fiscal year 2223. Hello, Stacy.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm Stacy Tumani, Chief Financial Officer, and tonight I have the financial update for the first quarter of fiscal year 2223. First, we'll start off with fiscal year 2122. These are the unaudited year-end results. We have the original budget in the left-hand column, that was the 92.5 million, and then the final results for the end of the year. We expect total revenues to be at 102.7 million and total expenditures at 98 million. The difference between revenues and expenditures is at 4.6 million and that's before the application of ARPA dollars. So that will take your unassigned fund balance, which we have there in the bottom gray bar, from 19.2 million to 23.3 million, or 23.69 as a percentage of expenditures. And so when we're looking at this revenue less expenditures number here of 4.6 million, it does look good for this fiscal year by itself, but this really should be considered one-time revenue. This increase was a result of a few things. We had very conservative budgeting in this fiscal year. We were right in the middle of the pandemic when we were creating this budget. And so that kept expenditures down. We also used the internal service funds that helped to reduce the benefit costs that were funded by the general fund, so that also kept expenses down. And then combined with that, we had better-than-expected sales tax results due to the impacts of inflation and fiscal stimulus. So people were still able to purchase their same amount of items. It was costing them more, so we got more of that sales tax revenue. And we also had building permits. They continued at a very strong pace throughout the year and that contributed to this increase in revenue as well. But that, those trends are not expected to continue. Our sales tax increase for fiscal year 2223 is going to be very minimal over the prior year, possibly decreasing in 2324 if we go into a recession. And we've also seen our building permit activity go from 100-plus permits per month down to just 19 in November. So that trend has slowed significantly. As I mentioned, we use the risk management and compensated lease funds to keep expenses down in the general fund for the past two years. And this slide here is a fund balance summary of the general fund and our two internal services funds. And I have this up here as a reminder that although we ended that fiscal year with a surplus in the general fund, it's in part because we used these two other funds to help reduce those costs. Over the past two years, we've used about $4.4 million combined between the risk management and the compensated lease fund. So that saved the general fund $4.4 million. So now, because sales tax and building permits performed well last year and the general fund has been replenished to pre-COVID levels, it's staff's recommendation that the council consider paying back the risk management and compensated lease fund so that all three fund balances would be at a sufficient reserve level as we move forward. If the council were to consider this recommendation, it would leave the general fund with a projected 18.7 million in your rainy day fund or 18% as a percentage of expenditures. So you'd still be above your council minimum of 15%. So now we'll move on to our current fiscal year, fiscal year 2223. And based on the data we have so far, just through the first quarter, which is July through September, the projection is for revenues to end the year at 103 million and expenditures to be at 103.6 million. We will be applying whatever ARPA funds are used, that revenue will be offset. And right now, we're projected to have a shortfall by the end of the year of $165,000. That would bring your unassigned fund balance to a percentage of 22.28% before you did any reimbursements if you decide to do that to the internal service funds. When we look at the unassigned fund balance graphically, we were trending up from fiscal year 13 up to fiscal year 19 as we recovered from the Great Recession. And this fund balance as a percentage of expenditures was as high as 26% back in 2006 before the downturn. And having that level of reserves was how we got through the recession. We were able to just reach about 20% of expenditures in fiscal year 19 and then we had to use fund balance to manage the impacts of COVID-19 in fiscal year 20. We recovered in fiscal year 2122 and we're projecting to end fiscal year 23 at 23 million or 22% of expenditures. And as a note, since we're looking at this unassigned fund balance, the city has an established financial policy for the use of the unassigned fund balance. And the policy states that this undesignated fund balance will be used to provide for temporary financing for unanticipated extraordinary needs of an emergency nature. So the goal here, and just a reminder for this, is that we have this to have a prudent level of financial resources in order to protect against having to reduce service levels in the event of an emergency. So I hadn't read that in a while and I just wanted to say that again. So now we're looking at general fund revenues. We have our unaudited 2122 figures in the left column. In the middle, we have your current budget for fiscal year 2223. And then to the right is where we project these revenue sources will be at the end of the year. So I'll go through the major categories here. At this point, we're projecting property tax to be right at budget at 36 million. Sales tax is projected to come in at about 28.4 million. That's just slightly above budget. We are still seeing the impacts of inflation that affected sales tax in the prior year and that continued into the first quarter. So this is the projection now with that result getting us to the end of the year at about 28.4 million for sales tax. TOT, or transient occupancy tax, is projected to come in at budget. And charges for services in total are projected to come in at about 11.9 million. So just slightly above budget. We're projecting a small increase there for parks and recreation revenue. These have been recovering continually since the pandemic. So this is an adjustment to their revenue projections based on the activity through the first quarter. Licenses and permits are projected to be pretty much at budget. We've seen over the last couple of years, big increases in this line item due to building permit revenue and having it go over budget, but this year is not expected to see that. And then we have transfers in and all other revenue coming in right about at budget. The next slide here is your sales tax trend. We have the fiscal year 2223 forecast in that first gray bar and then the forecast for 2324. What we're seeing, we've talked about this a lot as we were going through the last budget, is the flattening of our sales tax growth and now we have the potential for actually declining growth if we enter into a recession. Sales tax is always the first thing to react, so we would see that first. Our sales tax consultants have now projected very moderate growth for the near future and that's what's graphed here. It averages less than 2% annually over the next few years. And then I've also inserted these red lines here. So the solid bar represents our sales tax trend that we were on before COVID-19. And then we have the dotted line, which is this lower trend. And what's really important about this is actually looking at the results. So the top of each of the bar, where it is- So the top of each of the bar, where it is in comparison to that solid red line, that's just lost revenue of what we had expected our trend to be. And so that sales tax growth not keeping up with our expenditure growth, because our expenditure growth used to be on that same red line, and it still is, is one of the big factors that's creating our projected structural deficit for the future. So now moving on to the projected expenditures for fiscal year 2223. I have the same columns here. You have your prior year numbers, unaudited, the current budget, and then your projections for 2223. We're projecting at the end of the year to be about $809,000 over budget. I'll start with salaries and benefits. We're projecting to be under budget by $400,000 for this category. And it's a combination of a few things here. In fire, we're projecting an increase over the budgeted amount of $930,000. And this relate, this is related to the new MOU. This increase was communicated to the council as we were moving ahead with approval of that agreement. So the council was aware that this would be an unbudgeted expense that would impact this fiscal year. And so we're seeing it going into place now. We're also projecting overtime in the fire department to be over budget by about 1.6 million. Again, this was not unexpected. It was just unbudgeted. So those two combined is about $2.5 million over budget. However, we have savings in this category for the first half of the year due to both fire and police having many vacant positions. They're working to recruit those now. So that's helping to offset this increase in fires expenses. If we had been fully staffed for, for all of those budgeted positions for the full year, then we would, we would be projecting to be over budget in this category by $2.5 million. And so that's a concern for the upcoming budget year. With the level of expenditure growth that we've had, expenditures are on track to exceed our total revenues as we move into next year. And that's a structural deficit we've been anticipating. Operation and maintenance is projected to come in over budget by about 1.2 million. This is in part due to contracts to serve the plan area. These are paid for by community development revenues. It's for inspections and plan checks. And the community development department uses outside contractors to assist with that work. So we had that high level of building permit activity. The revenue has come in. We still need to provide those services. And so that's what this, part of this amount is. We also have increased costs in park maintenance and facilities, and also just an overall increase in supplies and contracts across most of our departments related to inflation, supply chain issues, and some emergency expenses that, that have come up so far in this fiscal year. So that's contributing to this projection of in total being over budget by $808,000. As far as the enterprise funds, all three funds, water, wastewater, and solid waste are projected to end the fiscal year with operating revenue exceeding expenses. And working capital in all three of those funds is in good shape as we move forward. So that concludes the financial update. I just wanted to finish here by asking if there's any direction to staff to return with an item to propose a reimbursement to the internal service funds, and if you'd like us to bring any information back related to that.
Thank you, Stacy. Any questions for Stacy?
I have one. Is, is there any urgency to that action? Reimbursing the risk management or compensation leave service funds?
No, no urgency per se. Just as we move into the budget cycle, looking at the percentage of fund balance you have in the general fund, it'll be different. And then looking at how we would budget in the risk management fund. If we're at the minimum level you would want to be in there, and we have some increases to our health benefits, to our liability insurance, our workers' comp, as we move forward into the next, next budget cycle, then those costs will have to increase in the general fund in, in order to cover.
So are those different service funds? Are there limitations on what we can spend that on once it's, once money is in there? Or can we pull it back out and put it into the general?
No, there's no legal limitation. This is just a.
Just a planning tool.
It's a planning tool. Correct.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So I remember we pulled, oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to remind the council, we pulled from there for the pandemic. So yeah, they're not restricted.
Can you go back to the slide that has the risk management? That I think was one of the first or second.
Slide number three.
This one here?
Um, yes. So. So I'm, so where did the $3,288? Where, where was that? Where did that go to?
So that, what we did, the, so the risk management fund, and I have some notes here just to make this simpler. The risk management fund covers our medical, dental, vision insurance, our workers' comp, and our liability insurance. And so what we do in the general fund is we budget a flat amount. So just, let's just say it's $20,000 per employee. We transfer that money into the risk management fund, a flat amount. Then we get the bills for our medical, our dental, our vision, our workers' comp, and our liability insurance. And the risk management fund pays them. And it could be significantly more than what we had thought it would be. So the risk management fund pays the bills. And so let's just say the math was that we transferred in $20 million, but our bills were $22 million. The risk management fund pays that. They, they take the hit for that extra $2 million. And then in the next year, we need to try to recover that from the general fund. And the way this works well is that instead of having to take $2 million from the general fund in one year, we can smooth it out because the risk management fund will have significant reserves to be able to do, maybe we do an increase of $300,000 over three years, or whatever we need to do to get that money back into the risk management fund. If we don't have significant reserves, then we, we're not going to be negative in that fund. So the general fund will have to pick up whatever we couldn't cover because we didn't have reserves.
If I may also add to that, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Rohrbach, in any given year, the city's potential liability in terms of claims and litigation exceed $10 million, any given year. We have been working really hard all those years to make sure that Stacy doesn't have to get a call from me. So, so far, so good. But in the event somehow the city does get deemed for some unforeseen situation, that's where those additional money will need to come out, come from.
Correct. So, um, so looking in the budget, I see the actual fund balance for the risk management for June 21 was $9,732 and some dollars. So nine million, nine point seven million. And then you have your, obviously, your revenue, estimated revenue and estimated expenses. And it's saying that the, the fund balance should be at the end of 23, or June 23 fiscal year, should be 9 million. So to me, this seems like not necessarily an estimating issue. So I'm not sure why this was extraordinary this year. But I also, so I guess I'm kind of thinking maybe along the nine lines of Councilmember Kozlowski. I'm not, you know, an advocate for taking the general fund right now and putting in this. I feel like that you could get a little tighter on estimating in the budget what the costs are going to be. You have revenue and expenses. So yeah, please let me know.
Let me address that. So on purpose, oh, go ahead. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Can I ask before I lose it? So I'm not sure where the 8 million, 8.6 million dollars number is from. It says pre-COVID. This only goes back so far. So.
But that was fiscal year 19, before we had the impacts in fiscal year 20. So that was where that number came from. That was the balance we had. And as far as estimating in the, in the budget, we, we, we didn't estimate less. We budgeted less revenue to come in from the general fund so that the general fund would have less cost to deal with during these two pandemic years. So revenue was expected to be lower in the risk management fund because that's what we took from the general fund in order to pay the expenses.
So you estimated 10, I'm looking at the budget, right? So the CIP and operating revenue, you budgeted 19 million and change, change. And you're saying you probably should have budgeted more, and that was the issue?
No, in the two, in the two past years, for this to happen right here where it went low, we, we used it on purpose, which meant that we knew that expenses were going to be, let's say, $20 million. But we only transferred 17 million in from the general fund to save the general fund that, that excess money between what we knew the costs were going to be and what we actually took from the general fund to pay those bills.
Okay. So also looking through the budget, once again, it's not something I can get correct the first time. But I'm interested if, seeing all these kind of, unassigned balance obviously is clear. Our policy is 50%, 15% we go over it. You have a risk management fund. Obviously, we need that for this issue. There's other savings, basically accounts or unreserved funds in each, in most departments. I would like to see if you could do like a summary of all, where all of our, you know, kind of funds are sitting for instances. I know YK, you and I talked about some other reserve funds and a couple different funds. That's all I can think of the word. So do you know what I'm asking?
Yeah, these are the three that we have that are, that can be spent on any general fund operation. Other reserves are in the enterprise funds, and they can only be used for enterprise operations.
But I would like a copy of, not a copy, but a, a summary of all of that. And you said three. So you're including the compensated.
The general fund, yeah, the management, risk management and compensated leaves.
Okay. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions for Stacy?
I don't have a question. My preference is that we repay those funds now. Because I, I think we run the risk of you leave it in the unassigned fund balance, people start thinking that, that we've got this cushion. Why are you saying that we've got, you know, structural deficit or whatever, look at all this money? But no, we need to take care and pay that money back, in my opinion.
YK?
Spend it. Yeah. Good. Stacy, I know you helped us during the agenda review time. My only question is, I think one of those slides, you have a beautiful slides for unassigned fund. The nice bar charts are going on. If you can help us in a similar way, the risk management fund for last 10, 15 years.
I did, whoops. I did this for you. I thought you might, I didn't do 10 or 15 because you couldn't see the numbers. It was so small. But we, we actually started around fiscal year 10 or 11. We're coming out of the recession to save for this. And so beyond that, this fund didn't exist. And so we, we got to about 23% of expenditures in, in 14, 15. It grew up to about 50%, which was the goal that we had in that fund. And then it's come back down in the last two years as we used it, down to 27%.
So if you don't mind, if you can help, in 2014, 15, the reserves are $3 million?
Correct.
And it is constantly increasing until we hit that big pandemic?
It was constantly increasing. And you'll see the operating expenses were increasing too. So in order to get to 50% of expenditures in reserves, the reserves had to increase at the same or a higher pace than expenditures were increasing. So you went from $14,000 for the bills I was talking about for workers' comp liability. Went from $14,000 a year up to almost 20, I mean, 14 million, up to almost 20 million for fiscal year 2122.
So we are adding a little bit more extra every year, even though the second line is increasing, but the top line is increasing more thicker, but COVID hit.
Correct. Because we were aiming to get to the 50% of expenditures in that fund, which is what we were at for fiscal year 1819. So we had, we had met the reserve that we had anticipated.
Yeah, you know, again, I, I'm with Mike and Anna for, for now, right? But at the same time, I have to think, you know, I hear quite a few times, recession, 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 right? So, but I'm not seeing the same thing in 14, 15, 15, 16, 16, 17, the 50%. The one is 3 million, and the expenditures are 14 million.
You're asking why we didn't have 50% in there?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a policy, then we have to aim for that policy, drive towards it, right? It is nowhere close, and now the policy is coming here. Just want to understand.
No, it wasn't close because we had just started this fund. So we couldn't transfer $10 million from the general fund in one year. The general fund couldn't support that. So what the general fund could support were these small increases each year as we were recovering from the recession. So this was a priority in the budget to build this reserve up to 50% of expenditures. So that happened. We were able to afford to do that in the general fund. And now we are where we are.
Got it. Okay. We set that policy for, I mean, 50%. We are driving towards it.
Yeah, it was a proactive financial strategy, and then we had to retreat.
We are driving towards it. It is a council-driven policy or?
It's financial, a financial policy, and it comes, it came every year as part of the budget document that this is how much was going to be added to the risk management fund.
Got it. It's coming from you and the city man, from, based on your experience, is that what? Okay. Okay.
Stacy, can you go back to the question?
Thank you. I want to thank once again for clarifying that one. That's what I was asking.
So I am in the thought process of reimbursing the risk management and the compensated leave accounts with compensated, compensated.
Yeah, it's a funny word name.
For the reasons that I, I just prefer to look at a more realistic budget than, than not.
Yeah, and for clarity, I, I kind of feel that way also. I was just asking the question about urgency. That's all. I wasn't inferring that I didn't want to repay them.
It's not, I wouldn't necessarily call it an urgent decision, but it's more of a decision It's not, I wouldn't necessarily call it an urgent decision, but it's more of a decision of sort of accountability and looking things square in the eye, I guess is the best way I can put it. The general fund reserve balance is artificially inflated right now. And I think, I think Councilmember Aquino started to say this, but if you keep it that way, no, there isn't any urgency, but if you keep it that way, just the way you think of your household accounts, it just becomes very easy to think we're flush, there's lots of money there and there isn't. We're behind.
Okay, so.
I have a clarifying question. So I'm sure I'm missing something, but in the budget, on your actuals there in 2021, it was 6.8 million was your balance. But it says unrestricted net position, so I'm assuming that means your fund balance?
Yeah, the unrestricted net position, so you'll have kind of total cash and then you'll have a fund balance in that fund or net position, depending on the fund type. And then we have a deposit. And so you have to, you have to, you have to subtract the deposit because we don't have that cash in that fund.
So in the budget, it says 9.7 was the actual for 2021 and that's why we're seeing 6.8 million?
If you look at the financial statement for it, which is in our act for every year, then you'll see that as the total net position is the number you're referring to. But the unrestricted net position, which is what we have available to use in cash, is these numbers here.
Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like the consensus is to fund these two, is that correct?
Yes.
What's that?
Okay, so do you?
Okay, so we would bring an item back.
Yeah, we appreciate that direction, we'll return with an item to reimburse those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Stacy?
No, just want to make just one statement, what I think Anna was asking, left pocket, rice pocket, back pocket, you know, that kind of thing, it is in there. How to use it, thank you.
Will the clerk please call the next item?
Certainly, your next item is your consent calendar and as a reminder, item 13 has been revised. And I believe there was a request to pull item nine.
Nine.
I'd like to pull 14 also. I'll make a motion to approve items three through 19 minus number nine, number 14 and 13?
13 is revised.
Okay, I'm sorry, so just absent number nine and number 14.
I second that.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Okay, item number nine is resolution number 10954. This is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Peterson Brewsted Inc. for the water storage tank and cathodic protection systems inspection program.
Awesome. Good evening, Mayor Rodriguez, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director. I understand council member Chalamchela has some comments or questions on the items, so I am here to address those the best I can, thank you.
Thank you so much. It's more of the comments than any questions in a more pricing way. Because this, awesome, right? This, I usually pay quite a bit close attention to how our procurement process is going on. We have been talking and giving some inputs. I just want to praise you and your evaluators, the way they did it. We bid out and for four firms and three got back and you did the first evaluation of the first table. And about 100 points or 75 points, however it is, it's not clear, but that's not my question at all. So, and when you look at that one, not opening and giving specific weightage for the cost, waterworks engineer is going to win as per the first table.
Correct.
Right? And yes, we opened the cost, sometimes we do bid a weightage for the cost, 10%, 15%, 20%, 25%. And if you can slide down to the next slide, it is, it's almost $200,000 difference between those two vendors. So you graciously has given 25% weightage for the cost. I truly appreciate that 20, the other, other slides. Yep. If you can see it, you have given very gracious, you know, the 25% weightage for the cost, which is, you know, quite a bit high compared to the procurements I have seen before. By just doing that one, the lowest cost winner won. So the point I'm making here is, I know this is what we have been talking, giving the, you know, consist, a little bit more weightage for the cost on the consulting services. We do that one for construction and all those things. So my point here is, you save $200,000 for the state by at least going through the deeper and giving the higher weightage, but not just limiting to the technical evaluation and experience evaluation, those kind of things. I just want to give you a kudos and I sincerely request, I know Elaine, you're, you're, you know, making the process improvements, I would love to see that 30% weightage for the cost, especially for the services. Because that way, we want to give a dollar value, you know, higher weightage as well, besides their tech skills, experience and all those. I just want to bring this to everyone's attention here and give you kudos for saving money to City.
Well, thank you, as much as I would like to take credit for this one, I will be sure our staff understands that their praises deserved for this one.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. I hope I look forward to seeing this kind of evaluation and maybe a little bit more weightage on the cost across our departments. Once again, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
It's my Christmas gift for every citizen, thank you.
Can I have a motion for this item?
Yes, I think there's 13.
No.
I'll make a motion on this one with the kudos added to this motion to the Marcus team. I'll look for a second.
Second on both accounts.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll? Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba? And Rodriguez? Yes.
Okay, the second item requested to be pulled was item number 14. This is resolution number 10959. This is a resolution authorizing the city council to cancel the invitation for bids for the water meter replacement program.
Okay, I'm going to try and not be too wonky here. What is the technological advance that you anticipate by forestalling this bid to a later time when new technology is available from water meter manufacturers?
Okay, Mayor.
Generally speaking, it doesn't have to be detailed.
Mayor Rodriguez, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental and water resources director and council member Kozlowski. What we heard back from the, or what staff heard back from the meter manufacturers is that it would make sense for the city to break this up into certain meter sizes for a new bid process. So doing two inches smaller, maybe then three to eight inch and then something above that. Because some manufacturers are eliminating certain types of meters that are used. So let's say you're using a 12-inch meter. Some are going more towards magnetic meters, which don't have necessarily any internal working parts, but they do require either battery power or an electrical feed to that. There are some meter manufacturers as well in the small meters, so in the inch, inch and a half and even two-inch meters that are doing something very similar, where they are looking at getting away from all internal working components or everything working from just physical components. But the readings and the process of those readings to our meter network system going with battery-powered options. And so we have to rethink, you know, based on the feedback, just how we want to proceed. Because if you have battery-powered devices, we know what happens with those devices. Ultimately, you have to replace the batteries and then we have to strategically find out, okay, how often or how many batteries do we have to replace? Do we roll this out in a stock where we're doing maybe 1,000 a year? So you don't do, say, 10,000 at once and then in six to 10 years or 15 years, now you're doing another 6,000 because the batteries have all failed. So we just need to take a step back, talk more to the manufacturers really about what that means and then address, okay, how would we implement something like that? Mainly on the smaller water meters, because we have, you know, 19,000 or so that are in that one to two-inch range.
Does it, does, so the regional water agency was talking about potentially doing a broad request for proposals for all agencies to co-op with? Is that still going forward and is this slowing that process down also?
There are some agencies that are working within that context, but the group in itself wasn't able to come to a, I guess, consensus because everybody uses different types of meters.
I can't imagine why, based on what you just said, yeah.
And so I think that was the challenge, but we did receive some good recommendations out of that in terms of the pilot study that we're doing now in the plan area with a new meter type and a new networking piece of equipment to remotely read those devices. And so far, we've had good luck with that. And so that didn't really play a role into this per se, but it may be something that as others try to roll something else similar, that they will have to consider.
Okay, thank you very much.
Since my colleague pulled this one, I was thinking to call you after the meeting tomorrow on this. I know right now the collection from the meters to the hub, to the Texas and coming back at the end, we all can see as a drop counter how much water we are using. Sometimes the duration is about 28 hours to 42 hours, 72 hours. You just now mentioned you can remotely read the network. Is that going to increase the drop counter, can be more available? If I turn on the water hose and within several hours I can notify, hey, some unusual use this new technology, you're thinking?
Well, right now with drop counter, they'll, I think they can get down to the hourly data and that's how you can get informed of a potential leak. But a device that works well, that gives you more information than on the hour would be the Flume device. And we have a direct purchase program for that Flume device and that can give you, I mean, it will notify you. You have, we've seen a .015 gallon per minute leak for the last two hours. And that can give you an indication that it might be something, whether it's an automatic pool valve or a toilet valve or something leaking. So the Flume device can get more granular than drop counter can. So that, if a customer is interested, I guess I would direct them more to the Flume device because that gives you far more granular data and information that can detect a leak where, yes, drop counter is looking maybe back a little further in time for hourly data as opposed to every five seconds or so.
Right, and my question is more on the latency. Flume, I have it, so every 30, if anybody, you know, looking for, please, you know, buy, purchase a flume, it's working very well for me. Sometimes I try to water for my big trees with my hose. Honey calls me, I go inside and water going, but Flume sends me there is unusual water usage. I bought that one, thank you, Marcus, for bringing that. But not everybody has the Flume device, that's why I'm asking this question. You know, something happens today, the drop counter notifies you after 24 hours or something.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarity on the water meter thing. I'll move resolution 10959.
I second that.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Certainly, your next item is, you're moving to the new business calendar and as mentioned earlier, item number 20 is being continued. So your next item in business will be item number 21. This is ordinance number 1335, repealing and reenacting chapter 8.36 of the municipal code concerning the Folsom Fire Code. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening. Let me get this set up. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, little Santa Claus, Ken Casano, your fire chief.
Thank you, sir.
Tonight is the ordinance number 1335. It's the introduction and first reading, reading the ordinance, the city of Folsom repealing and reenacting chapter 8.6 of the Folsom Municipal Code concerning the Folsom Fire Code. So the background on this is that every three years, the fire code, California Fire Code gets updated. We update our Folsom Fire Code and the Folsom Municipal Code, chapter 8.36. This was last updated January of 2019 and it was eventually adopted January in 2020. Adoption of the 2022 edition of the California Fire Code is based on the 21 International Fire Code. And then local amendments, if you have any, you have to base them on climatic, geological and topographical conditions, which we'll get into in a little bit. So the California Health and Safety Code, it mandates that building standard codes are applicable to all occupancies in the state of California. The California Building Standard Commission amended and adopted the 21, or International Fire Code. And then this goes into effect January 1st of '23 for California. And then the government code that grants the city of Folsom the ability to adopt codes by reference. Adopting the 22 edition of the California Fire Code, it provides an opportunity for the city of Folsom to make amendments specific to the city of Folsom. And these amendments, like I had said before, they're allowed due to the climatic, geological and topographical conditions and we'll get into those now. And they're typically, they're determined to provide facts that are likely to affect health, fire and life safety. Climatic, that's the weather, as we all know, city of Folsom, this area gets hot, arid. It's dry, we get high winds, low humidity and it significantly affects fire spread. This time of year, fog and rain, it affects traffic, it increases vehicle accidents and then it also increases our response times due to those conditions. Geological, these are for significant earthquakes that could result in building collapse or damaged water mains, which are connected to the hydrants. Landslides could greatly affect access or structure stability. And that's just a, just a map there of the last 24 hours for earthquake activity, not too much. As I had learned, somebody said we are in a earthquake drought. I didn't know that. And then topographical, this is just slope, fuel and access. As you know, fire rises, so on sloped topography, it greatly affects the spread of fire. Limited access due to terrain affects our response. And then protected habitats and natural areas increase fuel density. So for amendments, all the prior amendments that are in the Folsom Municipal, Municipal Code will remain, with exception to the section numbers and code number changes that just make it consistent with the new 2022 Fire, California Fire Code. The only significant addition that we are adding is a chapter 90, sections 9001 through 9010. Excuse me, this is suppression and control of wildfire risk areas. As you know, we had a significant problem with some of our open space fires. We declared an emergency ordinance and this just kind of takes place of that, where it gives the, the fire chief the authority. When there's wildfire risk that is extreme, he or she can make that determination to close those open spaces and then when to reopen them. And so the fiscal impact for this is very, there should not be any fiscal impact for the city with this adoption of the new Fire Code. And then once again, the recommendation, this is the first reading and introduction of the ordinance, 1335. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for chief? Are there any requests to speak?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Thank you, chief, happy holidays.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion.
I will move the first reading of the ordinance number 1335.
I second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Aquino?
Yes.
Chalamchela?
Yes.
Kozlowski?
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Rodriguez?
Yes. Okay, will the clerk please call the next item?
Your next item is new business, item number 22. This is ordinance number 1336, an ordinance repealing and reenacting certain chapters of Title 14, Buildings and Construction of Folsom Municipal Code. This will be concerning enforcement of Folsom building codes. And again, this will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and council members, I'm Scott Zangrando, the building official. The, I'm here representing, presenting ordinance 136, which is to rescind, I'm sorry, repeal the 2019 building, essentially reseal the 2019 building code and reenact the 22, 2022 building code. Similarly to the fire department, the building codes, there's 12 parts less the fire code. There's 11 parts that the building department is responsible for. And most of these are ICC modeled codes with the amendments for California. Some of them are IATMO, the Uniform Mechanical Code and the Uniform Plumbing Code. These, these codes are amended by California and then, and then adopted by the Building Standards Commission, which mandates that they're enforced by the local jurisdiction. The city of Folsom doesn't really make many modifications to those codes, the standards, building standards or the technical information, there's no changes to that. There has been historically some minor changes to the administrative sections of the code. We have continued to recommend enforcing those similar recommendations or, I'm sorry, alterations to the administrative parts. And the, so for the most part, the changes in the codes are very minor. There isn't really anticipated to be any financial impacts on these codes, on the, on the new construction in the city. Historically, the electrical code, or I'm sorry, the energy code has stepped up some requirements and have increased the burden, financial burden on some construction. I don't see it happening this year to any significant amount. But with that, we're recommended to enforce the new 2022 codes.
Thank you, Scott. Are there any questions for Scott?
Full of questions tonight.
That's great.
You guys walked into all the stuff that I know the most about. The, what is the actual latitude to make changes to the model code that the city has in reality?
Okay, so.
And what is the, and secondary question is, what is the urgency to adopting? Can, how long can we go before we adopt the 22 code, for instance?
Let me address that one first.
Okay.
So the state mandates that those codes are adopted on January 1st, 2023, so.
So that happens regardless of our action?
Yeah, that happens regardless.
Okay.
So, so we go in there and make some modifications to them. These are really minor administrative type things. If you wanted to change something in the technical section of the code, typically it must be a little bit more restrictive. I mean, it can't be less restrictive is what I should say, less restrictive than what the code initially is.
So we couldn't, as an, this is just an example, I'm not suggesting this, just one that comes to mind, we couldn't change the rules about when you had to do fire suppression in a residence?
No, we couldn't, that would be a real tough one.
That's why I chose it, it's an extreme example, something that nobody would advise you to do. However, it is a
Sure.
lot of costs that was added to every residential structure not too long ago.
Yeah, I think it was 2010 was, when that was enacted. The, so that one, so you'd have to show that it's, that the importance of the changes are because of climatic, topographic or geological conditions that would justify why we would make, propose a change.
Similar to the fire.
It's exactly the same, I mean, that's, the Fire Code is one of those Title 24 codes. People always say, oh, Title 24, you mean energy code, but no, that's actually all the codes.
Right.
All 12 volumes. But, so then for us to go in there and try and, or actually for you to go in there and try and change it, say you wanted to make that change, there is options that you could propose a change at the, at the international code level.
Right, that's going to work.
Yeah, and then, of course, that's, that goes to committees within ICC and then they make recommendations and ultimately it would be voted on by the code. they make recommendations, and ultimately it would be voted on by code officials, you know, across the country. That would be a tough.
I will make my very short soapbox comment that there is a whole bunch of unfunded mandates that are placed on developers and homeowners within the building codes without respect to what the cost implications are of them, and they are trying to polish an extremely shiny diamond already. So anyhow, that's it. Thank you very much. I appreciate that clarification.
I just have a general comment for staff. It's helpful for me when I'm going to get something like this, where we're going to make a change to the municipal code, to see the red line version also. Like, Fire included both of those. You guys only included, you know, insert the word city of Folsom, you know, I like to see it in the code, see the red line, see what's being added, see what's taken out, which, you know, staying the same. So just an FYI for future, you don't have to bring it back for this item, but.
Fair point.
I do read those things.
Thank you, we'll be consistent on that.
I actually saw that in the Fire Code too, and I was impressed.
I will flag for you that when we bring the zoning code amendment forward, there are so many organizational changes that it would be an impossible task to do that, but by law, we're required to give you a bridge document explaining what those significant changes are so that you could do that comparative analysis pretty quickly.
Any other questions for Scott?
Nope.
Okay. Are there any requests to speak?
You have no request to speak on this item.
I will move the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 1336.
Second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Zikino.
Yes.
Chalam Charla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Yes. We will now convene the joint meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council board members, Zikino.
Here.
Chalam Charla.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
Rorba.
Here.
And Rodriguez. Here. Will the clerk please call the next item?
Your one item on this joint agenda this evening is your consent calendar, and you have no request to pull any item on the consent calendar.
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Zikino.
Yes.
Chalam Charla.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
Rorba.
Yes.
And Rodriguez.
Okay, we've now adjourned the joint city council meeting and reconvened the city council meeting, moving along to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Wild Nights and Holiday Lights has returned to the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary for its 12th year. Thousands of bright and colorful lights, sparkling ornaments and trees, lighted animal figures and displays transform our zoo sanctuary with holiday spirit. The event is open from 5:00 to 8:30 p.m. on various dates throughout this month, and all proceeds benefit the zoo sanctuary animals. New this year is that event and train tickets are only available online, so please keep that in mind, that no tickets are sold at the gate, and you can visit our website at folsom.ca.us to learn more. The city is in the midst of our second annual Holiday Lights contest, and dozens of Folsom households and businesses have entered by yesterday's deadline, and you can find a map of all of the Holiday Light locations on a tour map at folsom.ca.us/holidaylightscontest. Council members have each been assigned a category to judge, and they will make their decisions by Sunday night, so that will be exciting. And finally, I wanted to let everyone know that Public Works Department Administrative Assistant Jennifer Tio was named the 2022 Support Staff Person of the Year by the American Public Works Association Sacramento Chapter. The award recognizes exemplary service and high achievement in a public agency, and I was very pleased to attend the awards event honoring Jen alongside many of her city colleagues. I want to again congratulate councilmembers Zikino, Kozlowski, and Rorba for your successful campaigns, and also Mayor Rodriguez and Vice Mayor Chalam Charla for your new leadership roles. And since this is our final council meeting for 2022, happy holidays to everyone. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, Sarah?
I have no report except to say, well done running your first meeting, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Anna?
So I have a couple things. First of all, are we going to be doing a mid-year budget review? That wasn't a comment, it was a question, sorry.
Stacy, you want to respond?
We typically will do a second quarter financial report, and at that time, you could make comments or provide any input at that time.
Okay, so I have input right now. I know, watching the budget this year, that there was a grant that the police department applied for, for three officers, and I was pretty sure they weren't going to get it. And if they didn't, we were going to bring it back in, or the previous council was going to bring it back in the mid-year review. So I'd like to see that on the agenda in January sometime to talk about those two positions the police department did not get. So just follow up from last year. And then, the second thing, so as many of you know, I have previous council experience, and we did the budget a little differently. I'm not trying to change everything, but I would like to see a little bit more open process. I talked to you about it briefly, city manager, Elaine, city manager, I'm not sure how to title you. So what I would like to do is, in January, I would like to have each department, maybe group them, like Public Safety, for example, the largest first, come and report to us on what positions they're probably going to be asking for in the next year or two. And that way, as we go forward into the budget process, we'll have a real understanding of what the needs are. Kind of just, I don't think that we can properly prioritize a budget if we don't know what the actual needs are, and I hear consistently that every department needs something. So it's not that we're going to be deciding anything, it's just about information and what positions they need, right, they feel they need, right, once the needs are different. But, so I'd like to see that as soon as January 10th. I think both public safety departments would be available to put that forward, if that's something that we can find consensus on.
I'm fine with that.
Do you want, does the council want an item brought back on January 10th with a list of all of the positions that departments need?
I would like the department heads to come up and, so we could ask them questions. So that's why I'm saying, maybe not all the departments at the one meeting, but like have both chiefs come on January 10th, then we can, they can present a couple minutes, and then we can ask them a few questions about priorities for them, kind of flesh it out, and then we at least have the information. That's how I see it.
I think it's good exercise to do. I'm not wedded to absolutely happening on January 10th. Let's do it when it's a reasonable time in the near future. How about that?
So a natural time to perhaps do that would be at your February 16th strategic planning workshop, where we had already intended to, you know, it's always been a part of, you know, as I've mentioned many times, Stacy and I have brought, consistently bring more budget hearings than prior city administrations have, and we talk to you early and often about the city budget, and we consistently have had a section on what was left on the cutting room floor, kind of thing. And at the strategic planning session, our intent is to do a deep dive into that as well, and yes, you're of course invited to talk to any department head about those needs. They won't be shy in sharing, because they all get stuff left on the cutting room floor and have for the last four years at least.
I appreciate that suggestion, but I would rather, I think to strategize, we need the information before, and we can follow up with questions. I know, I think you said the departments will be there, but even today, talking to the strategy, but the, what are they, Becker and Tilly, or Baker and Tilly, they said there wasn't, that it wasn't going to be a budget session, so it was more about vision and strategy going forward. So it is important for me to get this information as soon as possible, so we can then strategize in February.
I personally don't want to promise the 10th, just because I haven't had an opportunity to sit down with Elaine on what this, what it looks like, so maybe soon?
January? And there's like, how many departments? Eleven? Yeah. But, it's up to you.
Okay, Mike?
My comment stands. I think it's a good suggestion. I just, I'm not absolutely in need of it on January 10th.
Okay. So the council comments, you're good?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, I really just have one thing, and it's a carryover from council comments from, I don't know, a month and a half or two months ago. And unfortunately, Mark is not here for me to poke at a little bit, but the development of plans for some median and safety protection along East Natoma in the area of the Folsom Lake Crossing, we need to reconsider what that is, because my understanding is that the plan as it is right now has gotten to the point where it's unaffordable potentially, and we need to, I'd like to revisit how it is that we're going to try and curb people's speed on the curb, on the curve and on the bridge, because we had yet another terrible accident there over this, you know, this past weekend. So people driving irresponsibly, we can't stop them, but we maybe can do some things to try and get them to lay off the gas.
Mark and I did just have that conversation a couple of days ago, and he was going to circle back with Zach and others too. He had a couple of creative ideas.
Yeah, so I'd like to make sure we bring that one back in the new year, please.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Can I say one more?
Yes.
I wasn't sure, I didn't notice. But it's kind of a piggyback on what Mike had, just reading the letter that we got today from the resident, that in the Traffic Safety Committee, it was voted on six to one to put a third, a three-light signal in at Gianada, I believe it was. And I'm just wondering why, after a year, it hasn't been brought to council and it's been moved off the agenda. So I think it's piggybacks with what you're saying is, you know.
Well, I was dancing around that. We've talked about that a number of times, and we need to talk about it again, but the design that was going forward was something else, and that has become, that design has become problematic cost-wise. So I want to revisit what was suggested in that letter and what has been suggested many other times.
Yeah, and maybe let us know why it didn't go back to the traffic safety, if it's about design, versus just a lot of residents' concerns about why their votes not mattering.
Thank you, Anna. My apologies for cutting you short.
Yeah, and just to wrap up council comments, I will be the one, I'm going to steal, I'm going to steal it from you, YK. Please, based on what I was just saying, everyone, if it's raining, slow down, first of all. That was a contributing factor to the accident that happened over the weekend. It diminishes your ability to stop and your ability to see things that are coming at you, or things that are stationary that you're approaching. And just as a general caution, slow down and pay close attention to stop signs. They mean for you to come to a full and complete stop and then proceed once you have stopped, not look around and roll through. So that's the advice I gave to my daughter earlier today, as I caught her doing that. Thank you, that's all I have tonight.
Vice Mayor Chalam Charla.
Thank you, Mayor. I know my colleague didn't comment anything, she saved the three minutes to me. My good friend, I am going to cover her. I have a few things to cover. This is year end, right? It has been two years, and working with the teams, our staff members, each department, and going through the recent three union contract reviews, and how and what we have heard from the union reps, you know, sometimes people leave for other jobs, right? But we are trying, you know, from the supervisors, managers, and city manager, and EMT, all the directors, we are trying our best to do in appreciation and retaining the employees. In addition to that, I would like to request my colleagues here, a proposal from each EMT executive management team, each department, is it a good idea to recognize employee of the year from the council? Employee of the year. So each finance department, Stacy may have a wonderful employee, working and going above and beyond and serving our residents' needs, sometimes staying extra hours. I just want to propose this to my colleagues, and especially city manager, and the council will give that award through our mayor or whomsoever she designates, but we will invite them and give them the boost up, and try to acknowledge all the hard work our employees doing in the city. But it is up to the EMT director's discretion how they want to pick that employee. They use a survey monkey or send a few questions, however, but we want to identify those hard working employees and recognize them with the title Employee of the Year. So that's my recommendation for my colleagues, you know, think about it highly, and if we like it, you know, why don't we do for this year? How that happened in 2022, maybe in March, February, March? I let Elaine, you know, comment on this, because I don't want to steal from, you know, your activities any doing, Elaine, but I have been there two years, but I think like, it's a good addition, in addition to whatever you are doing, council can acknowledge their hard work and boost up the employees. Right? So that's a recommendation. And along the same lines, if you see, I can only talk, last couple of months, what's going on in our town, Veterans Day Parade, it's a wonderful, successful event. Twenty-plus thousand residents are watching. Few people has worked so hard to make that event happen. Maybe we have to consider, how do we recognize them? Because yesterday, when we were here for oath and ceremony and all those, we saw the room full of people, and I know, Elaine, I was talking, yesterday was wonderful, there's so many people, we can see and we can talk. This may be another way we can bring the people back to the council, recognizing the people who worked hard on Veterans Day Parade, make it happen a success. Likewise, we all have seen the Santa sleigh going around town, I did couple of days. I was there and waving the people, thousands of people are coming out to wave, thousands, right? So, but few people worked so hard to put that event, some volunteers and a few of our city staff, bringing them and acknowledging them for their hard work. Yes, it is their eight-hours job, but not at 10 o'clock in the cold weather, freezing. Yesterday was 38, I was at Folsom South. So bringing those events, even Holiday Lights, Elaine, you mentioned also, I was there on the first day, oh my God, Parks and Rec team is up and down to put that event, thousand tickets sold every day. So these are the, you know, some of those iconic events, making Folsom a better place, more attractive place. So my recommendation, Mayor, to my colleagues also, identifying this kind of events, bringing them to here and recognizing them for their hard work, and make it a better place for recognition as well as residents. Those are my two requests. One, very focused with our employees, employee retention is very important. Nowadays, everyone is fighting for good employees, it's our opportunity to retain them. My last one is, Holiday Lights is there, but I'm not going to comment, we're going to judge on that. Just to talk about, you know, a couple of my colleagues mentioned on the budget, I know by February, March, both of you will ask, Stacy, our finance director and city manager, council, what are your priorities for 2324 budget year? You genuinely ask that question, because we are in the community, we hear things, this problem, or that's working well, or we want to do this one. So that's what you are expecting, how do we shift the money to, you know, serve the people's need? I think this is where I'm going to be agreeing with, you know, my colleagues, if department's heads can give us a highlight of their budget, if it is February 16th strategic, I'm absolutely okay with that. Wherever it is, as long as public, all five can see it, and then you ask the question, council, what are your priorities? Now, the experts from each department head told us what their priorities are. You know what? Nine out of 10 times, I have to digest their information, and then 1% I can add mine, then I can give you those three priorities, four priorities. So I highly recommend and request during the budget session, highlights, I'm not asking line by line, what is our Parks and Rec, I'm not asking that one, but highlights, and there we will definitely see, are there any resource needs? I know I was battling for the volunteer coordinator, I'm just saying that as an example. She may say that again and see this. So that's what my request is, if it is a strategic workshop, February 16th, highlights of the budgets from each department head, again, who are taking the bigger pie of our $245 million budget, like community development, Parks and Rec, police, fire, those kind of things, that's my request. So those are my council comments. I know I took my friend's time also, but thank you again. It's almost holiday season, here is my little Santa, right? I'll wait for the end to, you know, blow my Santa, and happy holidays, everyone, and see you next year. Thank you, Folsom.
Thank you. For me, I just want to give a congratulations to the FPOA for doing the Santa throughout the neighborhoods. It was really a lot of fun. I want to give a shout out to Eric Lee, who's a fellow restaurant owner, he's the owner of Bacchus, and he goes all out, 100% costume, and on the first night we went out, it was pouring rain, and he just loves these kids, and he plays such a great Santa, you know, tonight.
You know, tonight, they did a event for Santa for the special needs kids over at the parking in the historic district, and I've stopped by really quick, and it's really neat, as someone who has a grandson who's, you know, a 10-year-old autistic non-verbal, he would not do well to see Santa in a traditional setting, but it was, it's really neat to see that he opens himself up so that special needs kids can, can hang out with Santa. So great job, FPOA. I also want to give a shout out to Kim and Andy Nelson. I met them the first night that I went out with them, and Andy Nelson is actually quite an amazing person. He assisted in the construction of the new sleigh, but he also created the app that allows parents to be able to track Santa coming through their neighborhoods so that kids don't have to stand out there for hours waiting for Santa. There are delays. Now people track and they can go to the location as Santa is getting there. So great job, Kim and Andy Nelson. And then also, you know, thank you for the compliment, Sarah. I did have some private sessions with Krista, who gave me some really just best practices. You know, we run for city council, we are council members, and then there's a process that must be followed when you're on the dais, and so it was a little intimidating, but Krista, thank you for, for sharing and teaching me just how to be able to run a good meeting. And Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy New Year. See you next year. The next city council will be on January 10th. We are in recess for the second half of the year, and so we will now adjourn at 8:28.
Merry Christmas.